So this, I always take a second, which is, alright, you're good now.
Okay, it's seven oh five, July twenty fifth, Street City Hall in forty Main Street, twenty fifth. Public City of Portland, we want this commission order, survey and petition to see. Paul Finn, Adrian Clark, Jake McNeely, Andrew Stone, myself Jake Bay, also present as being Harry Cyrus, seven one, as enforcement officer and a city planner. Next is, approval for the June twenty three meeting.
Do you know if that we approve or not?
Second, have a second favor.
Aye.
She carries. Next whole business, there's none. New business. Okay.
Can, is the applicant on, do you want to put him back a little bit?
Uh, no, the applicant hasn't, hasn't joined, we can, we can move on to the next.
Okay, the show cause hearing?
Well, we'll see if it, uh, I mean, it's up to you Jake, however you want to do it, we can, I mean, it might actually make more sense to do the, the.
Staff report?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Do that. Um, and when we're done with this, we'll see if anybody comes out and.
So staff report, we have, uh, for enforcement, we have a couple of irons in the fire. Um, my perennial favorite, Babbling Brook, thirty seven Babbling Brook, this is the ongoing issue with the consultant not being responsive, um, I did, was finally able to get in touch with them, I would basically just harass him and call him all times to leave, um, and, you know, he promised me that he would have something by this meeting, he hasn't had anything. So, basically what, you know, I asked the commission to consider how long I should get before I reapproach the actual applicant and ask him or require him to get another engineer or environmental consultant to work on. Like that, because we're coming up on a year.
A year, I think it's ten.
Yeah.
It's more than enough.
It basically just keeps on putting us off, this has been a really reputable person and one of the few that's in local, that operates locally, um, but there are others.
Yeah, well, maybe that will get a fire under, but maybe it's job he doesn't want.
Well, should I, um, do, does the commission have any thoughts on when I should give them, is like a red line, drop dead? Um, by the next meeting?
When is a year?
Um, it's hard to know, because the enforcement on this case began, I would say the enforcement on this case began about, that actually began about a year ago, maybe a little bit.
Longer?
No, not longer, about a year, and then it took a while to kind of get to the point where they were cooperating and calling and getting ready, you know.
Like an additional four months?
Right, so I mean, I could give them a, a year would probably put it in early October. I could just do the next commission meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say thirty days or sixty days, something like that. Thirty days, well, thirty days is pretty sixteen. This is gonna turn into that other guy. City Lane?
Yeah.
Who gave him a lot of leeway to try to get his stuff in order.
Yeah, I can give you the, I can give you the, well, there's not much of an update, but. So what I'm gonna do for Babbling Brook, I'm gonna do the next commission meeting, um, if he doesn't have an application in by then, we're gonna require that. Call in, that, I think this always happens, it's like the, the deposit thing in the store, when you put a deposit down, you know, you're, he's already done a little bit of work on it and knows the site and has communicated with me, so you're reluctant to kind of let it go, but at a certain point, I think.
Well, at a certain point, you're not really helping anybody, like it just, it just, you know, it's like, it's like when you let it kind of go way on there and then they can't catch up, it's like, you know, same sort of thing, it's not really that helpful.
Okay.
Be nice.
So I'll give him, I'll give him to the next commission meeting, and if not, I'll reach out to the applicant directly and say that they need a consulting. The, another one is, uh, three thirty five Winston Road, um, this is property owned by AJK, street that believe they own it, which is Danny Stoughton, Stoughton, um, this was something that come to the commission before, uh, I don't know if you guys remember this, it was, uh, with, with, um, Ken Barberi, this was the, it's got big ponds, on Still, on Still River, um, and there was a really basic application submitted, um, it's a violation in the upland review area, um, and, uh, and it kind of dragged on for years.
What was this for?
It was for, he was basically operating in, in an area that he doesn't need to, as an upland review area, offering the story.
And though, one of those three ponds, one of those ponds?
Yeah, kind of in that, yeah, right close to pond, he also like kind of punched in a outlet without.
Yeah, we had a sidewalk on there.
There was a sidewalk?
There was a lot, there was another one where he let, I believe it was Nickerson had to get his equipment off the site, so we told Nickerson he could park it there, and then I think what we were told, Nickerson knocked down a bunch of trees to make a parking area, which I didn't know about, so that was leviated, and then Stoughton let a friend of his son make an ATV trail.
That's what I remember, that's what I remember.
And he, he started gouging it up where there were wetlands and stuff, and we came to a agreement, like we took a sidewalk and said, you know, stay out of here, move over here, don't do this, and then as far as I know, everything was good.
And no one uses that trail anymore, so we, we had a site visit, um, with one of his representatives, um, but long and the short of it is, he's expanded the site, uh, now he's filled in about an acre and a half of wetlands with like processing material and stuff, so it's a huge, like picture one of those giant stockpile mountains, if you have a road up the stockpile, that's in the wetland, um, so it's, it's a, it's a pretty intimidating thing, they're they want to work with us, they originally came to us because of the permit renewal request, and we went out, we went out in the site and said, that's not, you know, we never knew it.
They thought their troubles were over.
With Stoughton, we never really had any issues with him, it was, it was always, seemed to be, he, he was just being a nice guy and letting somebody do something on his property and then light it on his property, and then Stoughton kept getting brought in, because he. But this one, um, sounds like he's, he's actually using it for his business.
Yeah, there's kind of a creep, because that, that, those proceedings, all of that ended in two thousand and nine, I wanna say, so it's been, you know, over ten years since that happened, and it kind of progressively has crept into that area over time, it wasn't a super wet wetland, but. So anyway, so what happened, so they also require approval from planning and zoning, that's a substantial change from their original approved site plan, and it's an earth excavation permit, uh, earth processing permit, which is like a whole separate, you need to have a special exception every two years, the public hearing, reapprove, it, it opens up this whole other thing, so he has a lot going on, he's shooting for an application in November, so we gave him until, forgot, over or September to get his materials in, because he'd need to get it in prior to that meeting, uh, and part of that would be a full restoration. I brought it up with his representative, a very friendly guy, Wes Cloud, but he.
It's not the same representative we used to deal with.
He's not a, he's not a lawyer?
No, no, we used to deal with another one of his buddies.
Okay, um, so anyway, so that, so, you know, so basically, we have that date set, as he needs to get his application in with the restoration plan for that, so we're.
As long as that's what he wants, I mean, sounds like he'll be.
Right.
Or, I mean, he's gonna be telling us if that.
Right, because it's such a big violation, um, I'll bring up anything to the commission that comes up, you know, uh, if, if he misses that deadline or whatever, we can talk about, you know, enforcement. But it's gonna be an issue with zoning enforcement, if he doesn't come in and he requires a wetland approval, he gets zoning approval, so, you know, unlike us, you know, like you said, we don't have fines or anything like that, zoning has fine, so he would start getting fined through zoning without even having to have wetlands, and he would need a wetland support to get to zoning, so, uh, we can kind of use their, right, their enforcement. Um, yeah, those are the two, those are the two big ones, there's a number of other things where I brought people in, um, clearing grading, uh, there's been a lot of water, so there's a lot more complaints and a lot of kind of little things that we've, you know, I've been able to work with landowners to get them out of where they are, um, but yeah, that's, that's pretty much that, um, only a couple of agent determinations, uh, three forty one West Side Road was, uh, additions in the upland review area that are very far from wetlands, um, and, uh, ten twenty one Highland Ave, that was a septic upgrade, it was in an upland review area, but should be a net improvement to the site, because the septic was failing so badly that it still be, you know, material to filter that, so.
Yeah, they just did that, that's like two houses down from me.
Yeah, you saw that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, that.
Well, he just, he bought the house recently, because the previous guy up and died.
Okay.
And I guess the sister sold, sold it, you know, cleaned it up and sold it, as is.
Right, and that was part of the as is, yeah.
So this guy moved in and, I mean, you know, the first couple of months, he's doing all kinds of work.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I did hear he got it on the cheap, and, uh, you know, uh, he's been, was very cooperative, so it started out as an enforcement, and he got his agents coming.
And he got Felicity Lane?
Right, Felicity Lane, so that, so where we've left that is that there's been no work there at all, all activity has ceased on that site, um.
Is it stable?
It is stable, um, I go there regularly, and if I see equipment being staged there or anything, I tell him to get it off, he has, uh, he's gonna get a site plan application in for development of the number, single family, two months of supervision there, um, but, we haven't heard anything yet, but his, his, uh, engineers, Ken Ricker, I talked to Ken recently, and he's like, I'm sorry, this is me, so I haven't been pressing it, it seems like the whole does been, but Ken, you know, engineers, it's like squeeze on engineers and surveyors, it's been pretty, uh, yeah.
Does the, um, Felicity Lane, that's where all these doctor's offices are?
Yeah.
Across the street, like if you go up, well, no, there is road, it's on the left.
There's doctor's offices on the left, and there's, you know, doctors on the right too.
Down there, and then it's residential.
Oh, and then it's residential, because I've never been, I've only been to various doctors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's the pediatrician with the cow in the corner, and so like, yeah, at the very end of the road, there's a gate, and it's all wooded, back there, and they were, they were playing around in the, in the wetlands back there without any permits or any idea of really what they were doing, so uh, we made them stop and try to get a plan, but they didn't submit it, held them to not doing anything like that.
That would be going on close to here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, and again, our perspective is that if they, the site's stable and they've stopped working on it, and now their equipment is moved off, then we'll just hold them to that until they can.
Although we have people actually, I think, like, put a lien on that. Put a lien on, no, he's gonna clean it up, because he's not gonna be able to get financing for anything else he needs.
We have to have citations on it, so I don't think we have any citations on it that we can do. Uh, zoning could do it, zoning, uh, but I think that Jeremy was the one who was doing that enforcement, and, uh, since it's now kind of at the planning and zoning setup, right, like we've gotten to the front door of planning and zoning, if they start working again, I could start finding them, but I can't find them for wetlands violations, I'd have to find them for like operating, like outside of a site plan. Neither of our guests have joined us, um, remotely.
Just a question as well, I assume it's a city sewer?
Uh, not sure, we can look at that though, Paul.
If that's, if it's near Stop and Shop, that's not city water.
I would, I would think it was, I would think it had city water. Do you see the lines?
Water, not over the sewer line. Something called. Public property, shit, I think it.
So if you want to move on, I'd, I'd be happy to kind of introduce this, this project, um. Being the applicant is.
Perigene?
Yes.
All right, well, this new business, applicant like Perigene, location eight eleven twenty forty street, assessment map one forty two lot zero zero two, activity construction of house, moving regularly, upland regularly.
Um, okay, so the, the history on this property is that, uh, there was a permit application for the single family home construction, um, two thousand and five, um, it was approved, construction began, uh, you know, using the site plan that you see in front of you, that was, that was the approved site plan, um, in the foundation went in, it was just a slab foundation, no, no basement, that's why I knew it wasn't what we're talking about there, up on the hill, away from the wetlands, in the correct location, we have an ASVIL that, that, that was, uh, um, so they brought in an ASVIL survey, that they had to get a, a survey of where the corners of the foundation are, to make sure that they were meeting the zoning setbacks, um, when they continued work after that, uh, Ken Barberi, who was one of my predecessors, noted, um, a lot of erosion on the site, um, failure of silt fences, this is kind of a, a general example of what the site looked like. And there's more pictures, but that's kind of a good example of, um, what the site looked like, so the silt fences had failed, there was a, a lot of precipitation, I guess, that year, and a lot of water, a lot of sediment going right into the wetlands and into the creek, um, so the applicant was required to, uh, attend to show a cause hearing, deal with that issue, um, presumably they came in, I didn't see the, the minutes on that, it was just a, it was a violation notice, um, they ended up being given a deadline to comply, they didn't comply, and so their permit was revoked, and the date of the revoke, the revocation is was December eighth, two thousand and six.
So there's, there's just a foundation area on this slab, that's it?
Yep, there's the, there's the, the, the crossing is there, um, which at my understanding is it's an old crossing anyway.
Culvert?
Yes. Um, and then there's, they presumably kind of improved and filled in the area that was a wetland that they were permitted through that crossing, uh, through the driveway, um, and then the slab was there, and all the vegetation was cleared to the limits that you see there, um, and then court of stock, and then there's been no activity on the site since two thousand and six, um, and then he came in and filed another application, he wanted to use the same permit, I mean, I'm sorry, the same site plan, uh, I told him that that could be the starting point, but that, you know, our engineer is likely gonna have additional comments after that period. Um, so I accepted the application, using that as a starting point, um, and then city engineer Paul Comeson provided these comments, um, and I can read them to you if you'd like.
Yeah.
Uh, the plan needs to be recertified by, by an engineer, um, I think, engineer Sterling, so he's simply hired, so, um, the applicant did get a, a new surveyor engineer who took over a lot of Sterling's, um, practice, um, I don't remember, but he was, he was kind of the point person, he took over all of his jobs, so he has all the drawings, um, and he said that he would recertify it, so that's his engineer at this point, um, the other comment, uh, plan should reflect current owner, um, confirm the flag wetland limits, so he's requesting a second survey to confirm those limits, uh, existing concrete pipes appear to be old and deteriorated, as a result, there's little confidence they will be suitable for use at this time, recertification cell should address issues, um, and provide, um, confirmed pipes will still provide expected design life, so they have to do an assessment to make sure that those. Effective.
The culvert pipes?
Yeah. Uh, the design, so sanitary and water lines to be installed, so there must be sanitation in there as well, um, on either side of the culvert under the brook, design plans need construction notes for de-watering and how to work in the brook to show stream, and show sewer circulation.
Do they need to get, uh, a reevaluation of the concrete if they're going to replace them, because I thought I read that there was a possibility that they would replace those pipes?
The culvert?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think that they would if they replaced them, but that's, that's the plan that we have, is to visualize the existing culvert, right, and does it say replace on?
I thought I saw something about, well, it says removal of the old culvert.
Oh, oh, no, if you look on the plan, sorry, I should have been more specific, there's another existing culvert.
Oh, okay.
In the streams, it, it's probably, you know, it's not functioning, it's probably just sitting in the bed of the stream, and as a part of that plan was the removal of that, since it's acting as a barrier in the stream, so that's, that's what I was, I should have been clear, there are two old culverts, one is non-operational, um, so, so yeah, so he's requesting that, uh, de-watering, so there should be a, a way to access the trenching there, and how they're gonna do that, and then how they're gonna restore the site, um, right, cross section of driveway, the center line of brook, existing concrete culvert pipes have exposed reinforcing wire hanging from the ends, conforming integrity of the pipes, um, existing concrete culvert pipes have thin sheet metal covering the center joints, will need to be removed and pipes inspected, so really just, you know, probably need to just replace that culvert, um, how will the proposed guardrails be installed, you note that there are guardrails, uh, that, you know, for the bridge crossing, find details for the note and riprep to entrance and exit of culvert, specifying the size of stone thickness and dimensions, um, they have the city torrenting driveway detail applies, that's due with, uh, working right away, and that's, um, provide construction details for working in the brook, um, to reset section of six point, uh, six by four RCPS, that's what I was talking about, the one that's in the raw, I think, yeah.
Is this being paved or is it being, is it gravel?
Uh, it's, right now, it's, it's gravel, but it's really overgrown, and I don't know, so that would be a good additional note to.
And it shows gravel, I think.
Does it show this gravel, so that's, so that's, so that's what they're proposing?
It shows sanitary sewer and water. The SS?
I can't see it. I am, oh, okay, it sees colors.
There's silt fence, and then there's water.
Yeah, 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 I saw the water line, I did not find a sanitary sewer line.
Alright. So, so that, yeah, that's the entirety of, uh, the engineering comments.
So this was originally approved?
Yes.
This is what was approved.
Right, and that's what was attached to the, the original permit that was revoked, because you'll note the, um, soil and road, the silt fences that are on there, that's, they weren't maintained at all, um, so yeah, so I did provide this to the applicant, for him to communicate to, then I didn't hear anything.
So the applicant, just so I know, he's, he's a developer?
Yes.
Did he take the silt fences down right now, someone?
They're probably underneath the bike box.
Once that was revoked, did he take those down?
I think they just got out.
Well, just pull those right in.
So, so the task at hand at this point is to accept, formally accept the application and determine whether or not.
What's on either side?
Residential.
Very sure how are you built?
Yes.
Okay, I know that we accept the application for Mike, thirteen, uh, streets, that's her map, one forty four, block zero zero two, lot zero zero two, for construction of a house. Hearing, and, uh, no, um, public hearing necessary, not a significant activity.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, you want to do the second one, to show cause here, I can't do that, unless they're here, I'm trying to just.
We can. Yeah, so we, we can definitely talk about it, um, I can give you a little bit of the site history on it, and you can decide how you want to proceed with the work, if they choose not to show up, then. Um, alright, so this is a property, um.
Official, this is this?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, show cause hearing, property owner, and, Fasim, I don't know, location two oh seven Silver Brook, name, that's her map. Slash zero zero one slash seven, violation grading and clearing map wetlands, moving upland regularly.
Alright, so, uh, this is another historical, uh, issue, so I'll start from the beginning, um, this stemmed from a enforcement action in twenty eighteen by Risa, uh, Risa Malanca.
Where is it, where's Silver?
Silver Brook is off of, um, Notting Hill Gate, uh, that's off of, it's, 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 I think, fire sub, yeah, yeah. So it's kind of, yeah, halfway through, there's a relatively new section.
On the right, this?
Yes, on the right, going up the hill, um, so, uh, in twenty eighteen, there had been a complaint by a neighbor, and this is coming from the minutes from the July twenty sixth, twenty eighteen, um, uh, there was a complaint from the neighbor about grading and clearing in the backyard and the upland review area of the wetlands, um, so, you know, the same owners, Barat and Fasim, Maro, were asked to, um, for seven sentence season disorder and asked to show, uh, pretend to show a cause hearing, um, they did attend that, um, you know, basically the work that they were doing during that period of time was higher up in the upland review area, uh, didn't, it, to Risa's assessment, it didn't appear to be impacting the wetlands, and that they would just require an agent permit, so that we can monitor the work on the site, um, the commission agreed, and they were issued a, an agent determination permit, um, July twenty eighteen, um, so, right now, we're coming up on the five year anniversary, which is the length of our permits, so the permit is still technically only active for, um, I was driving by there fairly recently and noticed new soil stockpiles that I hadn't seen before in the backyard, kind of see, I don't know if you've got a chance to.
Yeah, I did.
You kind of see them through, um, in the winter, it's a lot easier to see.
Right, you see it through them.
But he was staging it in the winter, um, I sent a notice, that was kind of, or maybe it wasn't even the winter, it could have been in the fall, uh, well, I only have the season disorder, I don't have the original notice, uh, yes, I do, I sent a, I don't know if that was May fourth, so right before I went away on leave, I sent, I sent this, um, while I was away on leave, they got back and said, okay, we're gonna remove the chickens too, we're gonna remove the chicken coops, there's no problem in the backyard, we're not doing anything, really, that day, don't worry about it, um, but they didn't leave a number or anything, and I don't have a contact from the permit, because the permit's kind of old, um, so basically, uh, so I sent them another notice saying, hey, you gotta comply with this, you gotta, at least contact, because I have to go on site, and they never got back to me, um, and I noticed new activities since I had sent that, and so I sent the, the season disorder, just they seem to be ignoring.
I'm listening.
Yeah, um, uh, so basically, you know, at this point, you know, we have the, we have the hearing, they have, they chose not to, to show up to the hearing, um.
So are you gonna start finding?
Well, we can't, I can't find them.
You can't find them?
Because we don't have a, we don't have citation, we're just providing, that was another item we were talking about, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, so we, so we can take legal action.
Okay.
So the next, so my next recommended step here would be, if the commission asks that I engage with our corporation counsel, I'm gonna send a lawyer letter, you know, asking them to comply, and, and, you know, at this point, uh, because they haven't been responsive, um, you know, it doesn't do a whole lot other than symbolically, but the commission could revoke their, their, or, or, permit to show a cause hearings instead, instead of not.
How much time's left?
Well, pretty soon, so just a couple of weeks, so now it's gonna be, now it's gonna be a wetland violation and a new, new application fee.
Couple of weeks. So they'll be a violation. Right, right.
And what, what was it, the, the violation fee was like much, I mean, I know we waive them often, right?
Yeah, it's about seven hundred dollars, so it does, so it is actually limited, yeah, um, so you're right, if, you know, and if, I mean, if you revoke it now, then we can.
Do it now?
Sorry, I'm gonna run, oh.
You might be.
Oh, no.
I was sitting over there for half hour.
Oh, no.
Sorry about that.
Sorry about that, I thought you were gonna be coming in remotely.
No, I'm sort of there.
This is Mr. Perigene with, uh, Drive Grant Street.
Hello.
Sorry to interrupt that, yes.
No problem.
Um, so I don't know, we can finish up, I, there's, there's not much left on, I don't, but.
Well, I would just move the, so I actually think we should, we should move to revoke the permit.
That's what I think, and I mean, if you.
And put in a, do a violation.
For a car, well, weeks, sending a message that.
Yeah, and, and, uh, contact corporation counsel.
And if we revoke the. And if we revoke the permit, then when we.
Well, now you have one violation.
And it makes it simpler for them to reapply and you have to pay the full, the full price.
Right.
Um, I do think that it is, you know, it's more than just a violation of the permit by operating outside of it. I do have these two maps and you can see this is from two thousand and sixteen. This is prior to any of the clearing on the site. Um, but you can see the map wetlands, so this subdivision had wetlands that were already mapped on it.
Yeah.
And you can see this is the two thousand nineteen, so that was after, you know.
Oh, wow.
It's clearly the, into the actual wetland. So it's more than just, you know, a violation of the agent per, permit. They, they would have required.
It's a wetland violation.
Yeah. Anyway.
Did you wanna see?
I don't know, can you see the lot that's.
So, so he basically cleared out his whole backyard?
Yeah, and, and graded into the wetlands to expand along.
Oh, oh.
So you're asking him for not like restore it, but to basically comply and to, so we can move on from what he told.
They may have to restore.
Piles that are there, may have to restore.
Yeah, you have to probably restore the wetlands.
Just trying to get him in here to discuss this, usually.
Right, so yeah, so you wouldn't have to, for this kind of case, if you're, you know, yeah, if you're filling wetlands, you're gonna need. You know, that's, that's up to you to impose, but that's well within, you know, you respond to your, or you do these to require that.
Yep.
Um, but yeah.
So did I make a motion? Did I just say it?
So you can make a motion.
All right. So I make a motion that we revoke the agent permit. Um, for a property owned by Brad and Fasting Arjo, two oh seven Silver Brook Lane, assessment map. Two nineteen block oh one lot one nine seven for grading and filling mapped wetlands within the upland. That we issue a wetlands violation and we. Send you to, um, corporation counsel to get a letter out to them. Yeah, I'm gonna revoke the permit.
Have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay. We accepted your application. Wow, you know.
Here's my, it's twelve o'clock. Listen to this. I appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, I, and we can actually, if you want, uh, after the meeting, I can just talk about some of the engineering comments and kind of just next session.
I tend to, I recommend that he's in charge. He actually worked on that site with the other fellow, so he's giving you all the information that you requested.
Great, okay. So yes, the next meeting, I think, I, I don't remember off mutually, but I gave you the date for the next meeting. That would be when they would.
So, I mean, I was gonna start, not going, but just like there, next to the house were some branches and stuff like that or. Uh, wood chips that I gotta bombard it till I get that ready place. It's the commission and, uh.
Well, I, I meant, I definitely was here. What, what, what was the question?
Question was, can you, can you do some, some minor site, some minor clearing around the site while the permit is being discussed or does he have to wait till?
You can wait for the permit.
Yeah, usually wait.
You're gonna wait while the permit is approved?
Yeah, just to make sure. I'll, I'll pick them, so I gotta wait till they're, they're associated.
Yeah, great, awesome.
Okay, I guess next is, uh.
I'm a winner.
Is that it? Favor.
Hi.
Carries. Yeah, a few weeks.
Yeah.
Yep.
You look like you're working outside a lot. Look at that tan. Like you have a lot of yard work.